Session is called order? May we request Sheikh MP Ibrahim Ali if you're around to lead us in the invocation? If, ow! And please remain standing for the national anthem and the bangsa morahim.
Amin ya Robbal Alamin. Hanbulillahi Robbal Alamin. Ar-Rahmanu Rahim ala kiya middein. Iya kana'bud wa iya kana'sta'in. Ihidinas sarat al-mustaqim. Saratalladzina an'amta alaihim. Gharil maghdhubi lahim malautalim. Amin. Allahumma aslalh lana dinana ladzi wa asmat amrina. Waslalh lana dunyana lati biya ma'asyuna. Waslalh lana akhara'tana lati lae maduni Allah. Allahumma la tagani dunya akbarah mina wala mablagal mina. Allahumma ali murana khira na wala tuli murashira. Allahumma Robba na'atinna bid dunya hassanah. Abi al-akhra'ta hassanah tawqina adabannar. Sallallahu ala seyidina Muhammad. Wa ala ali was sa'bu salam bi rahmatika ya arhamur rahimin. Wal hanbulillahi Robbal Alamin.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit. Mga kababayan Pilipinas ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Kayang magiliw, kelasas sila halan. Halam ng kuso, sadi ti boi buhay. Lu pa'wihirang, uya kanang magiting. Sa manlulupin, ikapasi si dil. Sa naga'tak, utok sa si boyat, sa nadi pa'wong raw. Ayu na'tak, tulagawin sa, kung kayang mina mahal. Apis na'tak, uha kawat, uwi na'tuk, ay kana'ti ini. Ang pituhin na taro, ya kayla, pangayla ba't iti ning. Lu ba'na paraw, ka'war, labit pa'wong krah. Uwe na'bit sa bibigong. Amin mi'gaya na pa'wong nabi. Ang pa'wong kayang, gahil sayo. Simula ona gangayon. Iisang naging layon. Magka'isaan, magulun. Karitingan tay ba'utun. Umayu tayo, mula sa hamon ang dakar. Iyaku sa paganim na buhan lang. Inagaku sa kuso at paliniwala. Ang inhawo para sa kawatahan. Bangsa Moro ay ta'untay. Uka na'pa'wis suwat buhay. Kabayapan, katalugan. Ay atin ang nakantay. Al-hakdulilah, al-hakdulilah. Magpalayong bangsa Moro. Bangsa Moro, bangsa Moro. Lagi kang mamahaling. Walang pipigil sa damdamin. Mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami, sayo'y magpamantay. Mananati sa buhay kami. Mananati sa puso, ti sipan. Ang kahapung muting, tay nga nagpuwis ng buhay. Nasa piling ka'ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay talumpay. Ulanan pawis, suwot buhay. Kapayapan, katagungan. Ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalay bangsa moro.
Secretary General, please proceed with the roll call and determine the existence of quorum for today's session.
Roll call of the Honorable Members of the BTA Parliament: Abbas Akmad, Abbas Harol, Abbas Basid, Abu Mujib, Alamiya Liza, Alauden Mosber, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Ambuluto Soharto, Ameno Den Abdullajis, Ampatuhan Baintan, Anayatin Susana, Antao Muhammad Kelly, Arnado Marian, Asnawi Dan, Babau Ali Montaha, Balindong Pangalian, Basman Anna Tarhata, Handaw Bay Maleha, Delanggaren Hasimi, Dumama Alba Sya' Elaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Soharto, Estino Matarol, Gayak Abdowmo, Gera Edward, Ajay Abdowmo Khalid, Hasim Abdowmo, Hasan Hatimil, Eqbal Mohager, Ismail Rasul, Yajuri Raissa, Yakilan Muslimin, Jikiri Albakil, Kahalan Dan Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Loong Benjamin, Loong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Magapaaarab Abdowmo, Makasalong Magdiani, Makatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawil Baile, Mastura Esyaq, Matalam Japara Polo Mikael, Mawallil Amil Bahar, Mendoza Proylin, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Nur Reda, Mitmog Rasul Junior, Munius Hussein, Oranon Suwaeb, Pakasam Ubaidah, Pak Abdul Wahab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasio Randolph, Piang Ramon Senior, Ramos Jamila, Salendab Said, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semar Romeo, Sheikh Said, Silongan Aida, Sinulinding Kadel Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Paisalin, Tan Nabil, Usman Aspar, Utu Basib, Uyoyon Sitifahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillahirobbilahim. Wa bina astain. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker.
Recording in progress.
With forty-four members of the parliament responded to the call. We therefore certify the presence of quorum in today's session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With the certification of the Secretary General, we will proceed with today's order of business. Uh, Majority Floor Leader.
Bismillah. Rahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My courtesy is to the Speaker, Honorable Pangalian Balindong, um, and to the Presiding Officer, Deputy Speaker, Attorney Omar Semah. Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, Members of the Parliament, Staff, Secretariat, and guests who are around. Magandang hapon po. Mr. Speaker, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the Previous Session, Journal Number 29, dated November 30, 2023.
There is a motion coming from the floor to dispense with the reading of the Journal of the Previous Session. It's been seconded. There being no objection. The motion is approved.
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that we approve the Journal of Journal Number 29 dated November 30, 2023, subject to style.
Another motion from the floor for the approval of the Journal of the Previous Session. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Moving on, Mr. Speaker, to bills on first reading, we have two. One being a government bill and the second being a private member bill. Mr. Speaker, may we request the Secretariat to please read the title, the number, the title, and the author of the first BTA Parliament Bill.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the first proposed bill, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 267 entitled "An Act Providing for the Creation of Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw." Author: The Government of the Day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The second is BTA Parliament Bill Number 268, which is a private member bill. We invite members of the parliament who wish to be co-authors to please fill in the form that has been provided to you earlier. Mr. Speaker, may we request the Secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the next proposed bill, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 268 entitled "An Act Providing for the Halal Consumers Act." Author: Member of the Parliament Romeo Semah. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament Ali Montaha Babau, Muslimin Yakilan Albakil Jikiri, Paisal Karun, Tarhata Maglangit, Hamid Malik, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nur Reda Miswari, Aspar Usman, Soharto Ambuluto, Susana Anayatin, Matarol Estino, Abdowmo Gayak, Hatimil Hasan, Dan Martin Kahalan, Esyaq Mastura, Amil Bahar Mawallil, Roylen Mendoza, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Randolph Parkasio Ramon, Piang Senior, Ali Sanki, Basir Utu, Abdul Wahab Pak, and Jose Lorena.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Moving on, uh, we go to resolutions, Mr. Speaker. Starting with proposed resolution number 464, may we request the Secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the first proposed resolution number 464, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 464 entitled "Resolution Reiterating the Call for Unconditional Ceasefire in Gaza." Calling for the cessation of violence and abuses committed in the West Bank and urging the Bangsa-Moro government to send aid and assistance to the people of Gaza. Authors: Members of the Parliament Anna Tarhata Basman, Sya' Elaiha Dumama Alba, Raissa Yajuri, Marian Arnado, Paisalintago, Abdowmo Hasim, Baile Mantawil, Ahmad Abbas, Ramon Piang Senior, Magdiani Makasalong, Harun Abbas, Basid Abbas, Ubaidah Pakasam, Ali Sulaiman, Abdul Wahab Pak, Lanang Ali Junior, Abdowmo Gayak, Ibrahim Ali, and Soharto Ismail. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament Susana Anayatin, Tarhata Maglangit, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Benjamin Loong, Hussein Munius, Abdullajis Ameno Den, Romeo Semah, Ahmad Abbas, Hatimil Hasan, Muhammad Kelly Antao Ali, Salik, Mohager Eqbal, Japara Polo Mikael Matalam, Mosber Alauden, Eddie Ali, Sheikh Randol Parkasio, Roylen Mendoza, John Anthony Lim, and Faisal Karut.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we treat proposed Resolution Number 464 as a simple resolution.
There is a motion on the floor to treat proposed resolution Number 464 simple resolution and is seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize principal author of proposed Resolution Number 464, Member of the Parliament and Deputy Floor Leader Anna Tarhata Basman.
The Deputy Floor Leader is recognized.
Audzubillahiminashaitanirajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah. Wassalamu'alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Ala Rasulullah Robishrahli Sa'ri Weisheerli Amri. Wa Halul Uklata Melisane Fkoukouli. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, ikatlong pakakataon na hutayang binibigyan ng oportunidad na magsalita tungkol sa isyong ito. Ngunit hindi hu tayo magkasawa at hindi hu tayo mapapagod na tumindig sa ngalan ng ating mga kapon nagdurusa ngayon sa Gaza. According to the latest figures published by Al Jazeera, updated until a few hours ago, at least eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-seven Palestinians have died, which numbers include seven thousand seven hundred twenty-nine children since October 7. The number of injured is more than fifty thousand. But truthfully, Mr. Speaker, we are aware that we no longer have an updated and accurate count of the number of deaths, injuries, destruction, and other devastating consequences in Gaza. Owing to the dearth of information due to the cutting of communication lines and other methods of connectivity in the area, the magnitude of the destruction is now unknown to us and the rest of the world. But despite this, one thing is clear, Mr. Speaker: Gaza. Gaza is bleeding profusely. And so we stand again today to appeal to the remaining shred of humanity of those in power. All the nation-states who have enabled the state of affairs and all the leaders who refuse to wield their influence when they are able to do so. Call for an immediate and unconditional ceasefire in Gaza now. We thought one innocent life lost is too much, but we were wrong. We thought one child deprived of the right to a peaceful and enabling childhood will shatter our peace and shake our sense of humanity, but we were wrong. How many will be enough? How many is too much? How many more do we need to move us to action and awaken our collective and global conscience? The violence, per reports, has now expanded to the West Bank, though we know it has never been excluded nor immune in the first place. How far must the carnage expand until we are jarred to our senses? Likewise, Mr. Speaker, we know of the situation of the Gazans and what deprivation they are currently suffering. We are a small and young political entity. But, Mr. Speaker, though our resources are incomparable to the might of those around us, our heart for the Palestinians, for the Gazans, I believe, is gargantuan. Thus, Mr. Speaker, we appeal to the Bangsa-Moro government and our colleagues in the BARM to do our utmost to send whatever aid we can to the Gazans. We know of the challenges, we know of the need for formalities and the concomitant difficulties to work on them. But the inconvenience is not even a drop in the bucket of the trials of the people of Palestine. Let us do what we can. Even now, Mr. Speaker, as we speak, we have Gazans who have taken refuge in the Philippines. Safe from the horrors of war, they are facing the challenge of having to rebuild their lives in a foreign land amidst an alien culture with mostly nothing to start with. Kaya naman po tayo ay naghain ang resolusyon na ito upang bigyang atensyon din ang kanilang dinaranas at hanapan ang paraan kung paanong tayo sa Bangsa-Moro ay makakatulong sa pagpapagaan ng kanilang pinagdaraanan. Hence, Mr. Speaker, the approval of this resolution that will provide the Bangsa-Moro government the legal basis and authority to extend assistance to the Palestinians is most fervently sought. I am confident that we in this parliament are one in our desire to do our utmost for our brothers and sisters in Palestine. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader, I think, uh, there will be no one who will be, uh...
There are...
You are interpolating.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I now move to open the period of interpolation. So far, we have three in the list, Mr. Speaker.
The, uh, period of interpolation is now open.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Member of the Parliament Jamila Ramos.
The lady from Lanau del Sur is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Madam Floor Leader. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Miss Chair, ako po ay nakikiisa na sa muling pagpapahayag ng panawagan for the unconditional ceasefire in Gaza and the cessation of violence in the West Bank. Nais ko pong ipahatid ang aking buong puso suporta sa pagpasahan ng mga resolution na ito. Sa katunayan, meron po akong mga naihandang katanungan na pagpapahiwating po ng suporta sa mga naunang resolution tumatalakay sa Israel-Hamas issue. Medyo nanginhaya lang po ako sa mga pagkakataong iyon dahil hindi ko po naipahayag ang aking mga saloobin tungkol sa issue dahil sa mga hindi inaasang pangyayari ngunit. Ngayon, uh, Mrs. Speaker, hayaan niyo po akong ibahagi sa inyo ang aking kaalaman at saloobin patungkol sa issue na ito. Nabanggit kanina ng ating butihing proponent ang, uh, update, no, as to ng statistiko as regards the number of casualties. At gusto ko pong i-share na base po dito sa datos. Uh, as of December 18, 2023, the Palestinian death toll reached already twenty-five thousand six hundred twelve plus eight thousand plus whom were missing under the rubble. So, ten thousand ninety-one plus children were killed, five thousand three hundred ninety plus women were killed, twenty-three thousand nine hundred plus were civilians, two hundred twenty-two medical staff were killed, eighty-nine journalists were killed, hundred twenty-six targeted health facilities, twenty-three hospitals, fifty-six clinics, and forty-six ambulances. Mr. Chair, ito po ang pinakahuling update mula sa official government video office ng Gaza. Mula noong Ika-10 ng November 2023, ang mga sabisyong medikal at komunikasyon sa lusod ng Gaza ay tuluyan ang nawasak at nawala. Kaya't nahihirap ang magbigay ngayon ang kanilang official media ng regular na numero ng mga nasui at napahamak. Ngayong araw, Ika-18 ng December 2023, naglabas ang Euromed Human Rights Monitor ng bagong update kung saan mahigit twenty-five thousand six hundred twelve na nga ang bilang na mga nasui. Kasama na dito ang bilang na eight thousand na mga nawawala at pinaghahanap pa sa ilalim ng mga gumuhunggusali mula noong 7, October 2023. Mr. Speaker, after forty-nine days of captivity nitong October 23, pumayag ang Israel na magdeklarah ng apat na araw na pansamantalang tigil putukan o ceasefire. Gayun pa man, ito ay hindi sapat upang ilikas at irigtas ang buhay ng mga sibilyan na naapektuhan sa Gaza Strip. Hanggang sa ngayon, sila ay patuloy na humingi ng tulong dahil sa kakulangan ng mga pangunahing pangangailangan tulad ng pagkain, mga gamot, tubig, at damit. Katunayan, marami na rin ang namamatay dahil sa kakulangan ng mga kagamitan sa medisina at pagkain. Uh, Mr. Speaker, nabanggit ko kanina ang estimated casualties ayon sa Euromed Monitor. Bilang isang inam, Mr. Speaker at Muslim, lubos ko pong naintindihan ang sakit na nararanasan ng mga tao sa Gaza. Ikanga nila ang sakit ng kalinkingan ay sakit ng buong katawan. Namapo natin ang pagdurusan ng mga sibilyan sa Gaza. Nakakalungkot na makitang paghihirap ng mga kabataan, kababaihan, matatanda. May mga kapansanan at iba pang mga sibilyan. Ang mga pamilya ay nasa patuloy na takot at pagkabahala dahil sa patuloy na karasan at pagkawala ng kanilang mga mahal sa buhay. Ako po ay umaasang makabitang kapayapaan at katahimikan sa Gaza balang araw, insyaallah. Kaya naman po buo ang aking suporta sa panawagan ng resolution ito on unconditional ceasefire sa lugar ng Gaza at cessation of violence sa West Bank ng Palestine. Bukod dito, tayo rin po ay nakikiisa sa paghihikayat na magbigay at hatid tulong sa kanila upang kahit papaano ay maibsan ang kanilang lungkot at trauma ng kanilang pinagdadaanan. Naway gabayan ng Allah subhana wa taala ang mga tao sa Gaza at West Bank sa pagbabagoan ng kanilang sitwasyon. Patuloy po tayo, insyaallah, magkaisa at magtulungan para sa isang mundo napuno ng kapayapaan at pagkakaisa. Mrs. Speaker, meron lang po akong isang katanungan sa ating butihing author kung kanyang mamarapatin po.
Uh, opo, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, um, nais ko pong mabigyan ng linaw dahil dito po sa pangalawang resolution clause, nais ko pong itanong kung ano po ba ang saklaw ng tulong, aid, o assistance ang nais nating ibigay sa mga kapatid natin sa Gaza at paano po ito makakarating sa kanila. Natanong ko po ito, Mr. Speaker, dahil napakalawak po ng kahulugan at saklaw ng aid and assistance. Nais ko lamang pong mabigyan ng linaw kung anong klaseng tulong ang ibibigay ng BARM sa Palestine at paano ito makakabot sa kanila. Marami na po kasi akong napagalaman sa balita at sa social media tungkol sa nonprofit at non-government organizations and even individuals who... and even individuals who call for donations in kind and even in cash to be extended to affected politicians, uh, to affected Palestinians, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, our idea of a kind of help that we can give to Palestinians is what they need. We are well aware, Mr. Speaker, of the difficulty in the entry of humanitarian trucks to Gaza. But as I mentioned, Mr. Speaker, there are also Gazans that have taken refuge in different countries, including the Philippines. So, Mr. Speaker, this resolution is intended to provide the Bangsa-Moro government the necessary legal authority for it to extend assistance to the plight, to the individuals who are affected by the war, whether located still in Gaza or have now taken refuge in the Philippines or elsewhere in the world. So that, Mr. Speaker, despite the legal formalities or necessities, we are able to add this voice of the parliament in supporting, uh, in supporting the provision of aid by the Bangsa-Moro government. So the kind of help is not limited to one way. It can be financial, it can be in-kind humanitarian assistance. What is important, Mr. Speaker, is we have, as a parliament, made it clear that we are, uh, thinking of and also prioritizing giving assistance to our fellows in Palestine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. My opinion is that you said it right. There are Palestinians who took refuge here in the Philippines. And there are also statements saying who wants to extend their assistance. Uh, this is welcome. And I hope that the Bangsa-Moro government will extend this assistance also. And with that, Mr. Speaker, the second point is this manifestation. At a later time, I have one proposed amendment. Uh, this is about updated, uh, data and statistics and which I will bring out at a later time during the period of amendment. Given that, Mr. Speaker, if the proponent would allow, I would love to be associated in this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we now recognize a member of the parliament. I accept the amendment? Ah, the authorship, sorry, authorship.
Mr. Speaker, we would be very honored to have as many co-authors in this resolution as are willing. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On that note, may we recognize Deputy Floor Leader Attorney Joselo Rena, to be followed by Member of the Parliament Ali Montahababao.
The Deputy Floor Leader is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Floor Leader, for allowing me to... First, I'd like to be associated with this resolution. But I have some questions to clarify. Uh, if you are aware only, because in the past, there was a resolution submitted by the UN Assembly, which the Philippines did not support. Am I correct?
Mr. Speaker, which one? The call for ceasefire? I think the latest one, Mr. Speaker. The Philippines voted in favor of the ceasefire.
The latest one, the Philippines has changed the part.
Yes, before, Mr. Speaker, the Philippines abstained, indeed, early on. But the most recent one, Mr. Speaker, along with, I think, a hundred fifty-plus countries, the Philippines, uh, voted in favor of the call for, for the, voted in favor of the demand for a ceasefire.
And if you only are aware, almost all members of the United Assembly voted to support the humanitarian call for ceasefire.
As mentioned, Mr. Speaker, it is a hundred fifty-plus countries in the General Assembly voting in favor of the demand for a ceasefire.
Because of the objection of one country, am I correct?
Mr. Speaker, I think we're referring to the voting in the Security Council and indeed, the permanent member, uh, one permanent member abstained, another voted against the demand for a ceasefire.
Now, my next question would be a pursuit of this resolution. Our call resolution now is to have an immediate ceasefire. But do we end our support for this call in the ceasefire only? Or in the final resolution of the conflict in the Middle East, from your perspective?
Mr. Speaker, when we filed, uh, our first resolution regarding this, uh, the, what is happening in Gaza. Mr. Speaker, our call then was for the declaration of an immediate ceasefire as well as the resolution of the conflict that will give the Palestinian state, uh, or the Palestine, uh, that will give Palestine official statehood. So we don't end there, Mr. Speaker, definitely. In the beginning actions of the parliament, we have been clear about the longer-term vision this parliament holds for the people of Palestine. Uh, Mr. Speaker, the focus of this second resolution is for the reiteration of the call for ceasefire but as well as, uh, also providing aid to the, those affected by the conflict.
If I recall correctly, the resolution for a two-state resolution was quoted in the Bar for Declaration early by the United Nations. And many parliaments have already endorsed. Am I correct?
I am not aware of the number of nations who endorse a two-state solution, Mr. Speaker.
But for the Bangsa-Moro, would you think it is prudent for us to come out with another resolution to support the United Nations' call? Not only for a ceasefire, but to have a final resolution through a two-state resolution?
Mr. Speaker, personally, I would support a call for the final resolution of the issue of statehood of Palestine. However, the manner by which that is done, uh, I would defer to the people of Palestine.
The continuing, the ceasefire, which has been for a short-term period, have been broken many times. Do you think the resolution, a resolution to have a permanent ceasefire would be available?
Mr. Speaker, a resolution calling for what the, the global community desires, which is an end to hostilities, is always available. It's always paramount and it should always be asserted. How that is, uh, given effect, especially by the main players in this, uh, atrocity, is a different matter altogether.
Thank you. At the moment, I am, I want to be associated with a resolution calling for a ceasefire and assistance. But I would hope that, like other parliaments of the world, we will already move and advance towards a call for a final resolution of the conflict in Gaza. So that there will be no repetition of the situation that happens now. So with that, I just want to be associated. And I hope the all members of this parliament will support this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, uh, next is MP Babao.
The gentleman from Lanau del Sur is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Deputy Floor Leader. First, I would like to, uh, officially request that I be included as one of the sponsors of this, uh, very important resolution. Now, uh, I just want to propose some amendments in the, this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Maybe you can make the proposed amendments at, at the proper time. We're still in the period of interpolation.
Well, uh, okay, so...
May I ask now the floor leader if there are no more interpolators to terminate the period of interpolation? And let's proceed to the period of amendment because this gentleman from Lanau del Sur is...
Okay, Mr. Speaker, there's no more Member of the parliament who wishes to interpolate. I therefore move that we terminate the period of interpolations.
There's a motion coming from the floor to terminate the period of interpolation. It's been seconded. I'm hearing the objection. We will proceed with the period of amendment already.
Yes, I hope that we open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
The period of amendment is now open.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
You have the floor.
Uh, it's simple, it's my proposal in the last paragraph. Uh, in the, uh, last paragraph of the resolution. Because I noticed, Mr. Speaker, that, uh, we have not included the Israel, Israelis, uh, in the occupation, illegal occupation of the Gaza. That's why I am proposing, in the last paragraph, resort finally to furnish the cap, the office of the Chief Minister, the Department of Foreign Affairs, and the Embassy of Palestine, a copy of this resolution. So I'd like to propose, Mr. Speaker, to include the embassy, uh, after resolution comma Embassy of Israel and the Organization of Islamic Cooperation. That's my proposal.
Subject to style, Mr. Speaker, I do not object to the proposed amendment.
So the, the proposed amendment has been accepted. Secretary, take note.
Thank you very much, and that's all, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the next MP who has a proposed amendment is MP Jam Ramos, and she has already furnished the secretariat the language of her proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, my proposed amendment is just to provide, uh, an updated, uh, status on the casualties, Mr. Speaker. And this proposed amendment will have an effect on the second, uh, war as clause.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for a five-minute suspension?
One minute, five-minute suspension? Question resumes. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, uh, parliamentary status, uh, we are in the period of amendments, and there's a, an proposed amendment from MP Jam Ramos to update the actual statistics, Mr. Speaker.
We continue now with the period of amendment.
May I be recognized, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, we, you...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, my proposed amendment is flash on the screen. Uh, it reflects the latest, uh, update from Euromed Human Rights. Uh, the data is from the report that they issued, uh, December 17, but was actually released December 18, Mr. Speaker. And this has an effect on the second war as provision clause, Mr. Speaker. So it is a substitute war as provision, Mr. Speaker.
I already noticed here, uh, is the children and women not included in the civilians?
Uh, that is exactly what is reflected, Mr. Speaker, in the, uh, report by the Euromed.
One-minute suspension, one-minute suspension. Maybe, uh, these women and children are already included in... You may now proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to amend my proposed amendment to read as, whereas a report by the Euromed Human Rights Monitor on eighteen December two thousand twenty-three highlights a severe rise in casualties in Gaza with over twenty-five thousand death, including five thousand three hundred ninety women and ten thousand ninety-one children and more than fifty-two thousand insured. And attacks, and attacks to hospitals and clinics, health systems collapse, health worker fatalities, journalists death, and the displacement of over one point eighty-five billion Palestinians intensified the humanitarian crisis, Mr. Speaker. That is actually my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, subject to style, we accept the proposed amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, my apologies because the one that was transmitted was not the final.
And in the styling, we can also be allowed to reduce the number if, if only verified. Thank you. The amendment has been accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have one last proposed amendment. In the first where as provision, Mr. Speaker, it says there are more than forty days have passed since the government of Israel declared war against Hamas and started its military operations in Gaza. I believe, Mr. Speaker, we are already seventy days past, Mr. Speaker. I understand you forty days since it's filing, no? So if we can reflect the latest days, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we accept the proposed amendment.
Secretariat, take note, the proposed amendment as to the days is accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Madam Floor Leader, and to our good proponent.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of amendment.
There is a motion coming from the floor to terminate the period of amendment. It's been seconded, I'm hearing no objection. The period of amendment is now terminated.
I move that we approve proposed resolution number four hundred sixty-four, subject to the amendments and subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion coming from the floor leader to approve the proposed resolution number four six four, subject to amend, as amended, and subject to style. It's been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the next few proposed resolutions are of similar nature, Mr. Speaker. May we therefore request that the secretariat read all proposed resolutions in the order of business, their numbers, authors, titles, authors and co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
The secretariat is directed to read all succeeding proposed resolutions in the order they have been presented in the order of business, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed resolution number four six nine, condemning in the strongest possible terms the bombing incident during a Sunday Catholic mass at Dimaporo Gymnasium in Mindanao State University, Marawi City. Authors, MPs Jamila Ramos, Ali Montaha Babau, Don Mustafa Loong, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Michael Mithimbang, Kadeel Sinulinding, and Rasul Mithmu Junior. Co-authors, MPs Ali Sulaiman, Mujib Abu, Swaeif Orannon, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Tawakal Mithimbang, Basir Uto, Ramon Piang, Senior Tarhata Maglangit, Khalid Haji Abdullah, Abdullah Jis Aminuddin, Abdullah Gayap, Abdullah Makapaar, Faisal Karun, Said Sheikh, Amrusi Makatanung, Rasul Ismail, Abdul Karim Miswari, Randolph Parcasio, Dan Asnavi, Basit Abbas, and Dan Martin Kahalan. Proposed resolution number four seventy, condemning the tragic bombing incident at Dimaporo Gymnasium, Mindanao State University, Marawi City. Authored by MPs Edi Ali, Mohager Iqbal, Nabil Eitan, Jose Lorena, Atspar Osman, Ibrahim Ali, Matarol Estino, Amrusi Makatanung, Mujib Abu, Faisal Karun, Muslimin Jakilan, Dan Martin Kahalan, Hamid Malik, Mosber Alaudin, and Dan Asnavi, and authored by MPs Tarhata Maglangit, Ali Salik, and Rasul Ismail. Proposed resolution number four seven one, expressing the sense of the Bangsa Moro government vehemently condemning the vicious attack and tragic bombing incident that transpired in MSU Dimaporo Gymnasium during an ongoing Catholic mass on December three, twenty twenty-three. Principally authored by MP Marjani Makasalong and authored by MPs Said Sheikh, Basit Abbas, Abdullah Makapaar, Amrusi Makatanung, and Ali Sulaiman. Proposed resolution number four seven three, vehemently denouncing and condemning to the highest degree possible the heinous bombing incident carried out on December three, twenty twenty-three at the Mindanao State University Main Campus in Marawi City. Authored by MPs Randolph Parcasio, Abdul Karim Miswari, Tarhata Baglangit, Abdullah Jis Aminuddin, Noreda Miswari, Hamid Malik, and Dan Martin Kahalan. Proposed resolution number four seven four, strongly condemning the December three, twenty twenty-three MSU Marawi Main Campus bombing, expressing sympathy for the victims and their families, and urging all law enforcement agencies to bring the perpetrators to the bar of justice. Principally authored by MPs Mary Ann Armando, Siya Elijah Dumama Alba, Raisa Jajuri, Ana Tarhata Basman, Baeling Mentawil, Marjani Makasalong, Lanang Ali Junior, Kadeel Sinulindung Junior, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Abdullah Hasim, Soharto Ismail, Aida Silongan, Edi Ali, Matarol Estino, Ahmad Abbas, Ramon Piang Senior, and Mohager Iqbal. Proposed resolution number four seven six, condemning the outrageous bombing incident transpired on December three, twenty twenty-three at Mindanao State University, MSU Marawi Gymnasium. The sole author is MP Susana Anayatin. Proposed resolution number four eighty, condemning the strongest possible terms the heinous bombing of the Dimaporo Gymnasium in the Mindanao State University, MSU Main Campus in Marawi City, Lano del Sur, during a Sunday Catholic mass on December three, twenty twenty-three. Authored by MP Bayinta ng Patuan and authored by MPs Laisa Alamiya, Amilbahar Mualil, Soharto Ambulutu, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasul Mithmu Junior, and Rasul Ismail. Proposed resolution number four eight five, strongly condemning the bombing incident during the conduct of a religious gathering at Dimaporo Gymnasium, Mindanao State University Main Campus, Marawi City, and requesting appropriate government agencies for its thorough and speedy investigation. Authored by MP Abdullah Hasim and authored by MPs Ali Sulaiman, Nabil Tan, Noreda Miswari, Don Mustafa Loong, Michael Mithimbang, Faisalintago, Susana Anayatin, Raisa Jajuri, Dan Martin Kahalan, and Dan Asnavi.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consolidate proposed resolution numbers four hundred sixty-nine, four hundred seventy, four hundred seventy-one, four hundred seventy-three, four hundred seventy-four, four hundred seventy-six, four hundred eighty, and four hundred eighty-five, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion coming from the floor leader to consolidate all the mentioned proposed resolutions. Any second? There being no objection, the motion is approved. What is the pleasure, the floor leader?
I move that we treat the consolidated proposed resolutions as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat the consolidated proposed resolution as a simple resolution. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize one of the principal authors of proposed resolution number four eighty-five, Member of the Parliament Abdullah Hasim, to speak about the proposed resolution.
The gentleman from the special geographic area is recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. All praise is due to Allah, the Lord of mankind and all that exists, and the peace and blessings of Allah be upon the best of messengers, our Prophet Muhammad, whom Allah sent to mankind as a mercy, and peace and blessings be upon the family of the Prophet and his companions, and upon those who follow their way until the day of judgment. Mrs. Speaker, this resolution aims to strongly condemn the bombing incident during the conduct of a religious gathering at Dimaporo Gymnasium, Mindanao State University Main Campus, Marawi City, and request appropriate government agencies for its thorough and speedy investigation. Mrs. Speaker, we heard the unfortunate news that on December three, twenty twenty-three, at around seven thirty AM during a Catholic mass being conducted at the said gymnasium, an improvised explosive device or IED detonated. There is no doubt that this is a sad and heartbreaking affair, and it's even worse if these actions have been carried out in the name of Islam. Because, Mr. Speaker, Islam is free and far removed from these types of acts. Islam does not command these types of activities, nor is it pleased with them. Mrs. Speaker, the explosion killed four people, namely Junray Barbante, Janine Arenias, Evangeline Arumine, and Riza Daniel, and injured at least fifty others. Police said that the bombing was not a suicide attack. An eyewitness reportedly saw a man placing a bag believed to contain the bomb, while CCTV footage showed the two suspected bombers arriving at the gymnasium on a motorcycle at around seven oh three AM and staying there for eight minutes. The explosion produced a crater on the gymnasium floor. Mrs. Speaker, I have seen this small crater with my own eyes when I last visited the gymnasium along with our very own Chief Minister and fellow members of the parliament. It was reported that the IED, which was composed of a sixty-millimeter mortar round and an RPG high explosive anti-personnel component, had been concealed in a black tote bag. Mrs. Speaker, Islam prohibits the likes of these affairs, and Islam is at odds with these types of treacherous acts. And likewise, Islam warns of a heavy punishment to those people who do these acts in this life and the hereafter. Verily, the true Islam is that which has come in the Quran and the Sunnah upon the understanding of the Pious predecessors. Allah, the Most High, said, "Wala takutulun nafsan leti haramallahu illa bil haq", and do not kill those souls whom Allah has prohibited unless justified by a due legal right. And those souls that Allah has prohibited, it is referring firstly to the life of a Muslim, and it also refers to everyone who has an agreement with the Muslims. And likewise, those non-Muslims who have been given the right of safety by the Muslims. There is no doubt, Mr. Speaker, that in the entirety of the country, we are at least in one or more of these three instances. The Messenger of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, said in an authentic hadith reported by Imam al-Bukhari, "Man qatala nafsan mu'ahadan lam yarah rahiha tal jannah". Whoever kills a non-Muslim who has an agreement with the Muslims, then he will not smell the fragrance of paradise. The Messenger of Allah, Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, warned those people who kill non-Muslims after an agreement had been reached between them that they would not enter paradise on the day of judgment. And by this hadith, we surely understand and get to know, and we obtain with certainty that these bombings, if committed by Muslims, have opposed the Book of Allah, and they have opposed the Sunnah of the Messenger of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, and thus they have opposed Islam. Even in times of war, Mr. Speaker, a Muslim should abide by the limits that Allah has set forth. The Messenger of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, forbade in many hadith, authentic hadith, the killing of civilians, including women, children, monks or priests, emissaries or diplomats, teachers, nurses, doctors, and workers and the like in the times of conflict. When Abu Bakar As Siddiq, radhiyallahu anhu, was commanding the leader of the army during a time of war in a legitimate jihad, he ordered them to leave the worshiping monks who had isolated themselves in monasteries. Mr. Speaker, we are not in a time of war. There is a one-sided war going on in Gaza, and one in Ukraine maybe, but not in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker. In the bar, the scourge of terrorism is an intolerable threat to the nation's peace, unity, and progress. Acts of terror inflict immeasurable pain and suffering on innocent lives, destabilize communities, and hinder the country's socioeconomic development. It breeds hatred between people, and it portrays a wrong notion of the religion of Islam to those ignorant of it, including some of the common Muslims. Mr. Speaker, the Bangsa Moro people known for their resilience and spirit must stand united against the menace of terrorism. It is a collective responsibility to reject and condemn such acts, holding steadfast to peace and justice. We call on the appropriate agencies, including and foremostly the security sector, to preemptively and proactively maintain the peace and order of our locales, which are primarily mandated to them. Mr. Speaker, in conclusion, I would like to extend my warmest condolences and sympathies to the families of those who died in the incident, and I wish a full recovery for those injured. We ask for a speedy investigation by those appropriate agencies to give justice to the victims. We ask the appropriate agencies, including the MSU administration, to improve the security measures to ensure the safety and well-being of the students, faculty, and residents. Given the foregoing, the immediate passage of this resolution is earnestly requested, Sallallahu Alaihi Wa Laa, Muhammadi Wa Ala, Alaihi Wasahbi Wasallam. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, next, may we recognize the principal author of proposed resolution number four hundred sixty-nine, Member of the Parliament Jamila Ramos.
The lady from Lano del Sur is recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Isang mapagpalang hapon po sa ating lahat. Mr. Speaker, I present this resolution. As I present this resolution, I am reminded of a profound verse from Surah Al-Maidah, verse thirty-two. Whoever unlawfully takes a human life, it is as if they have extinguished the lives of all humanity. I am also reminded about the hadith of Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, who strictly warned against any maltreatment of people of other faith when he said, "Beware whoever is cruel and hard on a non-Muslim minority or curtails the rights or burden them with more than they bear or takes anything from them against their free will. I will complain against the person on the day of judgment." Indeed, these are resounding reminders of the importance to safeguard the sanctity of human life, irrespective of religious belief, promoting peace, condemning violence, and our duty to protect our people and ensure the blessings of democracy are enjoyed by all, upholding the sanctity of human rights, and powerful call for peace and unity across all faith. upholding the sanctity of human rights, and powerful call for peace and unity across all faith. Today, I stand before you as one of the principal proponents of a resolution in response to the recent tragedy that struck the heart of Marawi City. This bears not only the weight of our collective conscience, but also the solemn responsibility to address a grave injustice that has befallen our non-Muslim members of the MSU community. Mr. Speaker, noong umaga ng December three, two thousand twenty-three, ay karumal-dumal pong binomba ang MSU Dimaporo Gymnasium habang isinasagawa ang isang misa ng mga katoliko nating kababayan. Nakakalungkot at nakakabahala na sa nasabing isidente, apat katao ang agad pong binawian ng buhay. Tatlo po dito ay estudyante at isa po ay guro mula sa MSUIIT. Hindi rin po bababa sa limampung individual kabilang ang mga mag-aaral ng universidad ang nasugatan at kasalukuyang ngangailangan ng ating suporta at tulong. Ang Mindanao State University, na itinatag noon nineteen sixty-one, ay nagsilbing pangalawang tahanan para sa maraming estudyante at guro sa loob ng mahigit anim na dikada. And known for its academic excellence in promoting unity and inclusivity within its community, MSU has significantly shaped the lives of countless individuals from various ethnic and religious backgrounds. Sa mayamang kasaysayan ito, ang MSU ay naging isang haligi ng kahusayan sa edukasyon at cultural diversity kung saan malaya ang bawat isa na magsagawa ng aktibidades ayon sa kanyang sariling paniniwala. Sandangyaring isidente ay parang bumalik po ang malagim na alaala ng Marawi City. Hindi lamang ang ating mga estudyante at guro ang nabalot ng takot kunti pati na rin ang mga residente ng Marawi City. Sa parehong araw, naglabas ng pahayag ang ating Bangsa Moro government at ang ating mga ulama na mariing kinukundin na ang karumal-dumal na pangyayari. Sinuspindirin ang universidad ang mga klase habang nakikipagtulungan ito sa mga lokal na otoridad. Maraming local at national agencies ang nagpabot ng kanila, kanilang tulong kabilang namang ahensya ng ating Bangsa Moro government at mga opisyalis ito sa pangunguna ng ating Butihing Chief Minister Ahad Balawag Ibrahim. Kasama na rin dito, sinalano del Sur Governor Maminta Ladiong Jr. at MSU President Attorney Basari Mapopuno na personal na bumisita sa mga biktima. Nagpabot din po ang ating tanggapan ng grocery items para sa mga pasyente at mga estudyanteng naiwan sa mga dormitory. Gayun din ang financial assistance para sa mga kapamilya ng mga nasuwing biktima. Sa sama-samang pagsisikap na ito ay tinakita nating muli ang pagmamahal, pagkakaisa, at pagtutulungan natin para sa ating mga kababayan. Tandaan po natin ang katuruan sa atin ng Islam at ang pamumuno na ipinamala si Prapeta Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has exemplified in his life and teachings the principles of tolerance, respect, and protection for all irrespective of their religious beliefs. Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam established a community that sheltered those who coexisted peacefully with him, even if they did not share his faith. He ensured their rights, shielded them from harm, and obligated Muslims to be considerate neighbors. More importantly, he accorded them the same rights as those of the Muslims and governed them with the same fairness and justice. Mrs. Speaker, mataimtim tayong nakikitalam hati sa mga pamilya ng mga nasawi sa incidenting ito at nakiramay sa mga nasugatan at naapektuhan ng trahedyag ito. Ang puso ko ay kas, ang puso ko ay kasama niyo sa paggamit ng kapayapaan at katarungan. In this time of tribulation, we stand in solidarity with the community of peace, urging adherence to safety protocols set by local authorities. And together, we reaffirm our commitment to fostering a society rooted in tolerance, respect, and lasting peace. Kaya naman, Mrs. Speaker, nais ko hikayatin ang parlamentang ito na suportahan at agar ipasa ang mga resolution patungkol dito. Tais ko rin pong kunin ang pagkakataong ito na himukin ang lahat ng labanan, ang mga maling paniniwala o ideolohiya at protektahan ang ating mga kabataan. Sa lahat po ng mga magulang, lalong-lalo na sa mga ina. Malaki ang ating ginagampanan sa paggabay at paghubog ng tamang kaisipan at impluwensya sa ating mga anak para sa pagbuo nila sa kanilang mga prinsipyo at pananaw sa buhay. Patuloy po natin silang gabayan, tungo sa tamang landas at mas magandang kinabukasan. Muli, ipinapaabot ko po ang aking taospusong pakikiramay sa lahat ng naging biktima ng incidenting ito na way bigyan sila ng awa ng lakas at kapanatagan habang sila'y nasa panahon na kanilang pagdadalamhati. Maraming salamat po. Wa billahi taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wabarakatuh.
Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Another principal author who wishes to speak about the proposed resolution is uh MP Marjani Makasalong for proposed resolution number four hundred seventy-one.
The gentleman from Lano del Sur is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. A'udzubillahi mina syaitanir rojim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah wabihi nastain wa alaihi na tawakal amma ba'd. Salaamualaikum marahmatullahi wabarakatuh and a very good afternoon. Honorable speaker, esteemed colleagues, staff, and guests in the gallery. Um, as we convene today, our hearts are laden with sorrow and our resolve shaken by the appalling bombing incident that unfolded in Mindanao State University MSU Dimaporo Gymnasium during a Catholic mass on December three, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.